Okay, does that move us on to our next item? Mr. Bruce Spick got a question about the, uh... We should control putting the notes on our water bills.
Yeah, I'm sorry to, uh... Sorry to bug you about this, but, uh... I really wasn't sure what the history was on it. It is a rather involved group that's requesting. From what I can gather, uh, the town has the ability to put, I believe, sixty-two characters on its water bill. And typically, that's... Mayor Terry can back up. I think typically, that's always been used for something like, "This is why your water bill is high," or "This is why..." "This is changing our water bill," or "We might be testing our hydrants." Typically, the type of thing that's been done is to provide short, water-related messages on the water bill. What we have requested this evening is someone asking to advertise an event that's taking place locally, a very good event, and one that even, I think, to a certain extent, the town will be involved with. And, uh, it's just, you know, from my perspective, I'm a little bit reluctant to allow, um, to allow messages on profits on water bills just from the standpoint of there's not a lot of room and it could cause confusion with the water bill itself. However, if you are interested in doing that, I offered a couple of ideas or sets of criteria there. And that being that you provide the town manager with a little bit of leeway on whether the event's appropriate for a water bill or not, and whether it has final approval over the content of the message. And I think, you know, having said what I said in this case, if you do say, "Okay, let's advertise events for nonprofits," this probably would be worthwhile, I think, so far as a nonprofit's concerned, but I'm gonna have to be able to narrow the message down to a limited number of characters and what your organization, in this particular case, is proposing is something far outstrips our ability to actually put it on the water bill. And then second, it'd be for a nonprofit, I really don't wanna advertise events or sales or events that are put on by my businesses or for-profit businesses or anything out of that respect. And then finally, that we would limit it to just one event per year for a nonprofit organization. So if this is something you want to do, I'm just asking maybe you consider a couple of those, a couple, three of those criteria there. Otherwise, my inclination is to not do it.
Yeah, I'll comment on it. My five years of experience with this was that it was actually delegated well below the manager's position and our billing clerk would typically put some cheerful note down there about, uh... You know, rate increases are gonna become effective on July 1st, or "Don't forget the Christmas parades coming up," or "Don't forget the street fair." And if it was anything out of the ordinary, she might stick her head in my office when I was the manager and say, "How do you feel about this?" And I would say, "Fine with me." But, you know, we always avoided anything that got even close to, you know, violating that principle. And that's been at the public concern for private purposes. So we didn't, you know, we didn't put notifications about the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts or the Ring Deer Run or anything on there. And frankly, from my point of view, changing, having changed seats now and being on the board, I'd really rather not hear about this. I, uh... I'm real comfortable keeping this in the manager's lap. And, uh... What he's laid out here about, uh... Not using it for advertising private events, limiting it to notices that are important to the town and the utility system and maybe on occasion, if there's a month where you really, at a lack of something to put there, if you wanna make a notice for a nonprofit, I don't have any objection to that. But as a matter of policy, I don't think the board ought to tell you what to put on the bottom of those panels. I think that's something that we wanna definitely keep in the staff.
I agree with that. I feel like if the layout of the water bill was different, it'd be easier to designate like this clearly as an ad. But I think the way it's written, it would be confusing to people. And I do feel like we use the town with this for Facebook page to support local nonprofits. I mean, we...
You have a Facebook site, yeah.
Same one as we've been on there.
Yes.
I think that's a better venue for supporting our local nonprofits and our local businesses. If we had anything, to me, we could consider charging for the use of that space as a way to kind of cut back on our, sort of, raising rates. But I don't think, there's really not that much layout capacity for that. And I think any kind of copy like that would be confusing to people.
I agree. It would sort of take away from the event, you know, that...
I think it's okay, it's a town event. Like, this Christmas parade is, uh... You know, something related to the town. I don't know if it would be very confusing for the layout.
And nothing has been mentioned, this frankly, it's not very effective.
No, it's very, very much information.
I mean, I don't know that I've ever read that on the bottom of my bill. I give my bill, I give it to my wife and paste it in. I can't even tell you what was on. It shows up on the other. So if I was a nonprofit and was asked to pay for that, I could think of a whole lot better ways to spend my advertising than to put, you know, feetprints at the bottom of the water bill. That probably most people with the town voting or anything. My eyes...
Especially if it's on there until we start talking about it.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I think most people like me, my eyes goes to the amount of gallons. So I make sure I've got something that can put the dollar amount. And pay that in.
Power bill is what it's given. It means that we're either pink or white. So it's... Yeah, I agree. I apologize for bringing this to you, but I just, I wanna be sensitive for everyone that's involved.
No, no apology needed. I'm just kicking it back to you, saying that I think the right place for it is not necessarily even in your office. I'd leave it in the billing clerk's office with, if she has a tricky one, go back to the way we've been doing it. Let her decide what goes in there and, uh...
It's great that you have a book out there.
Yeah, have just the inter-office agreement that if there's one she's feeling uncomfortable about, run it by you, and you give it the nod, and we vote.
Well, I'm thinking that, you know, this particular item, I think, is a great public service. And I think if some nonprofits feel that they're getting, uh, utility out of a notice on their utility bill, you know, I'd like to leave it in your hands for, to make good judgment as to when it is appropriate, when it isn't. But I don't, I don't think we wanna limit it, limit somebody's ability to make such a request because we expect somebody to be on Facebook. You know, I, I... There are still people in the world that are not totally plugged in to Facebook and that's their source of information. And not that the water bill's gonna be, you know, I think, a game changer, but I think it's, if somebody wants to go through that effort to put it on the water bill and it is of this caliber of public service, I think we should give them the right to do that and leave it to manager to decide or whoever he chooses to do so. But I don't think we should limit the ability for folks to make a request.
I think it depends how profits get it, which ones don't. And it's not really that's what we're at all.
Yeah, that seems like a slippery slope to me that we... Didn't the town do the smoke, uh, a few years ago? Uh, well, the police department, they do a drug collecting...
We still do it.
Fire drug collection.
At the box, right?
They'll be involved with this. I mean, this is a kind of a highly marked event. I don't know if the choice can be, uh, upon this.
As a law, then it doesn't work.
Everyone suggested we should... Anybody's right to ask me, you know, this, like, uh... Comfortable when the manager handles requests.
Yeah, and I am as well, absolutely.
I got one. Thanks, Ed.
Let's see here. Capital projects update, is that first?
Thank you again. What I placed in front of you this evening is, uh, pretty much the format that we'll be using. When I leave you tonight, I had a little bit of problem as far as the access or the, uh, the ability to view these online. So what I'm going to do, uh, I won't tell you the long, sordid story, but what I'm gonna do tonight is, when I go back to my office, is provide each one of you access to view these documents, view all of these issues. You can have a link, you'll be able to go down, go on and view them anytime, send back a comment in the form of some sort of chat message or something like that related to the issue. And so you won't necessarily have to wait for the board meetings to see updates on some of these, on some of these projects. Now, if you're not really inclined to do that, what I'll do is continue to put out an update. But what'll be different is that if there's an actual, you see that how these are, this is in tabular format, what will be different is, is that once you see, what you'll see here is an actual update. You won't get necessarily a long-running, a long-running narrative on each particular issue. If you wanna revisit that, you can either ask me or you can go back to, go back to the application and look at it in real time. So before you this evening is kind of the, the format that I'd be using and I probably would be putting this in alphabetical order. There's just a short description or background. And really what, the way I approach this is that we're looking at this as more of a mental bookmark. So you can, you can look at it and go, "Ah, okay, this is the issue as far as Chad and Part Utility Planning is concerned." You go down to the table, date, description. You can, you can see what we've done recently on it. The basis is provided in the background. Downtown Visioning, so forth. Fiscal Impact Study, we'll be updating more on that. Doorlight Partnership, please. Vehicle Purchase Loan. Small Area Plan Process, Unified Development Ordinance. Utility Rates, Wastewater Plant Expansion and Upgrade. And there's gonna be a couple other on there as far as the wastewater infiltration, inflow process. And then I'll have the sidewalk, I'll have the sidewalk updates on there as well. I think, I think in looking at this now, the other thing, the other column that I might add to this is where each of these updates fit within our retreat discussions. I've mentioned that in background on most of these. If, for example, in, uh... Find an example of one. The Small Area Plan Process, in the background, I indicate that the Town Board Commissioner has established that he needs to develop a process to review smaller area plans here during the mid-year board retreats in 2014. So you can see where that came from. And as, as more of these develop, maybe it needs a, maybe a more specific reference to where this came from, how the issue originated. But anyway, the idea here is to provide something that's useful to you, that's useful to staff in order to be able to update, it's useful to me to keep track of these things that are flying at me. And also to be transparent for the public so that I will provide a link for the public to be able to look at these issues. They'll also have the updates available, continued, online. The difference, I guess, the technical glitch that I have to work out is that I, just the way everything works, if you've used it, I have to make the entire notebook available via web link online. So what you'll be getting is a little bit different. It's a little bit more pointed. You can still, if you want, go back, as the public would, and just, you know, view the link online and you'll see that in the email that I ship off to you tonight. At any rate, that's probably more of a comment on the updates themselves as opposed to the updates. Just a couple, I mentioned just a couple of things briefly. The Vehicle Purchase Loan Issue. Chief Cressfield is continuing to work forward on getting, working with a couple of vendors on securing the bids or securing the cars. I think we're looking at two different options. One would be through the state bid, which would provide just the cars themselves and then we'd go out separate for the lights, radios, and so forth. Or there's a complete, no pun intended, turnkey vendor that Cressfield is pursuing as well. And we should be looking at having the cars ordered in operation by May.
Three M should be hopefully by April and the fourth would maybe later in May.
Okay. Okay.
Not if I'm getting, I'll be sure.
Downtown Visioning, I provided, I probably made an update on that a couple weeks ago and technically not much has changed. What, the, just to kind of maybe revisit that issue a little bit, Kinley Horn is currently working through some, some design issues and will be getting approval from DOT on that. All said, we're probably looking at four months before they're gonna have some solid design that's probably ready for the public. At that point in time, we would want to revisit some sort of, some sort of forum, I think, to, to kind of get to know and understand what proposed changes or what changes are being designed for the traffic circle. In the meantime, I know I have a, I have a meeting with, meeting with Mr. Willis from the Roadhouse tomorrow. And we're gonna, I think, and what I'd like to do is try to come up with means of at least revisiting this issue and updating, you know, maybe the preliminary designs identified in the bidding process with IBA or in some of the form. So I'll be talking to Greg a little bit more about that. The Unified Development Ordinance, not much else to report on that. They're currently going through the codes and will be presenting a report to the Town Board Commissioners and other stakeholders soon. I don't have a date on when that will be happening, but they'll be using that feedback from those stakeholders, from the board commissioners, from the planning board for their final push in terms of drafting the UBO. So we'll be looking forward to reporting more about that. Small Area Process, I think, you'll recall that the mid-year board retreat in 2014, we talked about the need to prepare a process for reviewing the smaller area plans that will be coming in as part of Chad and Part. The town planner has drafted a document of some options. I'm looking at it. Mr. Messick is looking at it. I think what we're shooting for is to have something for you guys to react to on the night. So if that, I'll let you know if that's not, if that's... I have a couple of, I think, philosophical issues. I don't know as far as that's concerned, in providing you some of these options. And we should have something coherent for you at that point. Utility Rates, I know we're probably gonna have to come back and visit, visit that issue. We have some information, or we had, we probably prepared some information back on the 26th of January. We're involved with budget and things of that nature. I'm not sure where the board, you know, as far as hard process, where the board left off on that. But I think we'd probably be looking at that maybe before we really tackle the budget.
Before we talk on by, we'll go into some of that.
Wastewater Plantation Expansion, Wastewater Plant Expansion Upgrade, they should be calling your, your agenda, the consent agenda. This election committee, through all their hard work and review, did elect to negotiate or to recommend that the board allow the town manager to negotiate with Wooton Associates. And so that Fred and I will be working on that and having something to you guys at in the near future. And, uh... I'm gonna go off the script a little bit. As far as water, water treatment is concerned, you know, Carl, about this year last time, we had some discussion or I made some mention over what, what we would do in the event of a water, I mean, a winter-related water emergency. And I don't know that the two, the two most recent emergencies that we have that I'll briefly describe to you are necessarily winter-related, but seems, seems to, I don't know. I don't know if it's a scientific coincidence or not, but... Backing up, if you can further recall, in the retreat, Adam Pickett, the wastewater, water treatment plant, indicated that one of the things that we probably will be working on in the budget this year, in the capital portion of the budget this year, is a generator to make sure that we have power at the water intake station on the Hah River. You recall, we have generators at the wastewater treatment plant and at the water treatment plant as far as the treatment is concerned. However, in order to bring the water up from the river, requires that the pump have electricity. There was a windstorm that happened two weeks ago. It caused power to go out in the Bayon area which directly affected the water intake at the Hah River. Most areas of town were, I believe, had power, if I'm not mistaken, but the water intake did not. So what happens in that situation is, I think Adam's described this a few times, is that we have the ability to continue to discharge water to customers. We have tanks that store lots of water. But when we no longer have the ability to bring water up from the river, we're reliant on the water that we have that's been treated and stored. And there's obviously, that obviously has a very limited timeframe. In this case, we were looking at a power outage that occurred, I think it was sometime, John's not here anymore. I think it was Fred, if you recall, that power outage occurred sometime mid-morning on that, on the Sunday before last.
No, that's not.
I'm sorry?
No, that's not. That's not really, that sounds like...
That sounds like...
Night was the story, but the outage at the facility occurred sometime in the morning. Adam estimated we had until 7:00 PM before, before we ran completely out of water on the north side of town and affected, you know, flow issues there. The southern part of town, it's not faced with the same sort of elevation issues, the pressure issues probably had a bit longer. But it was, it was kind of, it was kind of dicey. Relatively short order, the power came back on, but it was a scare. And so from that standpoint, I really wanna stress the importance, I guess, of considering, at minimum, preparing the site for electrically for a generator, at least wiring the intake to allow for a generator to be brought in and connected. A portable generator could be used in this case. We don't necessarily have to buy a new generator similar to what we did at the water treatment, like the wastewater plant. So just when you think that that might be an extravagance, I'll say again, because it's, it's, it hit us hard and heavy. The emergency that we had yesterday was, I believe, over in the, at the chicken plant, we had a break, I believe, on the facility of, of the Townsend's plant, or in the facility of the Townsend's plant. We had a significant loss of water again in, I believe, it was the million gallon, the million gallon tank that had almost completely, and we were down above two foot, I think, at one point in time, before we finally isolated the problem at the Townsend's plant. Miss Rosco, Rosco, Rosco works, worked at the Townsend's facility, went over with Mr. Potte, isolated the problem. They were able to get into the facility, take care of it. But one of the, one of the issues that we had noticed with that, or the emergency we noticed with that, is that we don't, we don't really have a very clean way of valving off or shutting off the water at that facility should something happen. And so Mr. Potte, I think, is gonna work, is, is right now working with the contractor to put in a valve that onsite, near the site, that will allow us to reroute water and not have anyone else be shut off, but put us at a point where we can at least control the water that comes in and out of the Townsend's facility. So again, I don't know if that was ever a problem in the past, but it certainly was yesterday, if not Mr. Farrell, the other Mr. Farrell. I guess there are a number of Mr. Farrell's in town. The one, the one we have on, one of them that we have on payroll, I was able to figure out, so... Those were our...
Was it a frozen pipe or something?
I don't know what caused it. I don't know if...
Probably busted part, yeah, frozen.
So frozen, probably thawed and then broke, like we were talking about. The only other thing I would comment to would be on, just, this is, this is the last thing I'll mention, is in terms of the snow removal, in terms of the, there wasn't really was a snow removal, but the weather event that we just, that we just suffered. The, was, was a tad bit unusual and, you know, from my perspective in that it was, it was freezing rain that seemed to harden as soon as it hit the ground. And a lot of it happened in a short amount of time. And regardless of, and I haven't seen the article or whatever Mr. Wilcox plans on printing, but regardless of however many plows the town would own, there isn't a lot of them that would have cracked that ice. And even no matter how many salt bins of huge capacity we would have owned, there would have had to have been a lot of salt put down on that, on that thick, hard-packed surface before we would have seen any kind of benefit from it, given the cold temperatures that it has. Sometimes, sometimes you just hit it, and that's more or less what happened. We did our best as far as hitting the intersections in some of the other areas. The worst, I think, part of town that we had experienced was on Circle Drive. And we, we had a couple of complaints over in Circle Drive. Elsewhere, aside from our, aside from our email friends, we really didn't receive much of any other complaints. We had, we had one accident up till that point. And I think we did suffer another accident.
On Friday night.
On Friday night, it could be contributed to ice.
And swinging, active decay, but it could be, we'll be fine.
So that's within the range, if not under, of what we would have received in a typical time period. So I don't think there was anything out of the ordinary. That doesn't mean I wanted to have freezing rain every week, but...
We had three accidents the previous week in Drywood.
Well, to dovetail onto your remark, right, I'll tell you, after seventeen years of running the Chapel Hill Urban Operations Center in snow events, if I had an event like that with that amount of ice, I would park the snow plows. And the only thing I would have sent out was a couple of sand trucks if I had. That, you're absolutely right, you cannot, and the snow plows we had were, were five-ton dump trucks with the big plows on the front. And you cannot plow ice, impossible, without breaking your equipment.
So I think, I think what, okay, I think we can do, we can do a couple of things different. And I think one of them is gonna be, we are going to, I think, break down and purchase a, what I would consider a small salt bin that can very quickly be put on the back of a typical utility truck. And John originally, when we were talking about it, why don't we get something huge? And I reminded Mr. Potte that we're, you know, it's not just the truck, it's the salt you have to worry about. And when you start worrying about salt, you have to have a place to store it. You have to buy it, you have to store it. And I think he got kind of scared. At the same time, I don't know that he realizes that even a smaller salt bin doesn't necessarily mean that you can continue to use bags of salt. We're still going to have to deal with salt in some way, shape, or form. My point is, is that I think that there's probably a better way of spreading salt because honestly, what we have right now is just the guys spreading salt with their hands at intersections. And sometimes you need to have a little bit more time at your disposal for that. A way to create time is to have a more efficient piece of machinery that can help you do that. And so for over about $2,000 from Powellville, I think we're gonna be able, I think it would be money well, well-used to, to order something along those lines that is relatively simple and cheap to use and maintain. And it can also use sand as well. So, and continue to use brine and things like that, but... So if you feel it's on budget time, that you want us to start looking at some, you know, some bigger plows and get into the snow removal business, you know, there again. I think our future is freezing rain, more so. I mean, once, I mean, that's a lot more dangerous and definitely more deadly. Nobody knows how to drive on ice. I don't care how many wheels the vehicle has. It doesn't help once the ice forms. And the best way to deal with that is unfortunately through sand and salt. You get that melted a little bit, then you come in with plow afterwards and move it around. You get that melted a little bit, then you come in with plow afterwards and move it around. So I think we will tackle things a little bit differently, but all in all, I think everyone did a pretty good job in the FYI portion of your packet, and I think I had emailed that to you earlier as well, that if anyone in the public wants to see the planning the staff has that goes into one of these events, I think Prushtit, Chief Prushtfield can take initiative on that. What we have there, if you look at it, is a document that very well coordinates staff in terms of modifying one another and providing assistance during a weather event like that. But also too, is it gives us the doomsday worst-case scenario of having to declare an emergency, and we got that teed up already in the form of a resolution, and I think that was your suggestion last year.
Yeah, keep those on file, yeah, it can be signed quickly. What that allows you to do is to, you know, go to the county or the state and ask for backup. They can't plow ice either, so I don't know.
It's.
I get the impression that's going to be, I'm not trying to pick on Bill because he's not here, but I get the impression that's going to be the article that you're going to see. And to me, it's kind of demoralizing for our staff because they worked hard and.
Well, I got a call from Mr. Wilcox too on that, and I'd be surprised if that article isn't at all embarrassing to the town and disappointed. So, he knows both sides of the story, what's possible and what's not possible, and I hope he writes an article that reflects that.
If people wanted all those things, I doubt if he did a survey, hey, would you mind if we raised your taxes, so would you call us, so most people would say, yeah.
And footnote, we're going to park them and only operate it every fifth year.
Yeah, our streets, just, I mean, the type of streets that we have now, we really need to coordinate and consider that, obviously, with more, bigger, wider streets, that's going to probably have to be something that we look at with our fiscal impact. For pretty much the next five to seven years, I don't see us, I don't see us having to make significant investments in snow equipment similar to what you would see in Chapel Hill or even Chatham Hill.
So curiously, how much is a snow plow?
Just the plow or the truck, I mean, because the bigger. The one that we have, the one that we have which goes on the front of the utility truck, it really is a heck of a lot different from, you know, sort of a landscape that a landscaper would use during the wintertime. It is roughly $2,500. The plow that we have is roughly, is in that range. Now, you get into some of the things that Mayor Perry was getting up in Chapel Hill, but again, it's not even so much the cost of the plow as it is the truck.
Right.
Yeah, we put on five-ton dump trucks, which, you know, costs $60,000 a pop, and the blades are much bigger, so they're $7,000 to $10,000. And then the box spreader that goes in a five-ton dump truck is only $15,000. And then they last about, because of that salt, they last about three years. And then you, if you don't do your homework on those, you got to take them off the truck, wash them in fresh water, and then repaint them every fall, and hang them up so that they don't rot from the salt. But I mean, they're, yeah, it's, it all looks easy for your coffee table.
Now, you know, if you guys go home tonight and you change your mind, and you decide you do want to get more aggressive with equipment, I mean, essentially it's preparing, or it has a dashboard that is pretty much ready to go as far as Powellville is concerned. And we do have, we do have a little bit of money that we could use in a Powellville for things like this. I'm not so sure that I want to go as far as suspending $60,000 from all those trucks, but if we wanted to, we probably could do that, but that would be at the expense of paving a road, or fixing a smarbrain situation, or.
I think if we're going to get into the salt spreader business, I saw, I think you sent me a picture of one that fits on a one-ton dump or three-quarter ton dump, I don't know what that costs, but my counsel to you would be, if you're going to go down that road, don't get just one. One of anything is like having none, because you shoot it to, you know, four hours into the first day, it's going to break, and you're going to order a part, and it'll be three days before the part gets here, so if we're going to go down the road where we build the expectation that we have a salt spreader on the street, don't just buy one, because you could be right back where you are today getting emails from people that are, no where's the salt spread?
Well, then last year we also had people complain that we clear the roads too fast and they're concerned it gets slow, so.
And that's the problem, Sir Linsky, some new person they call a complaint, is everybody on Circle is out sliding.
Yeah, I can't, I can't even go there. I mean, in Chatham Forest, I know that I, you know, coming into work that day, I think it was the first day when we delayed to 10:30, I came around the corner and was hoping I wasn't going to slide down the hill sideways, and coming up facing me in the street is a crowd of people, including adults, in the street, as if I'm heading downhill, wondering if I'm going to be sliding, you know, in the car. And so I would just caution, I mean, in that situation, it's just really dangerous, I'm not going to lecture you. It's tricky, I think over in your area, it's a little bit, it's a little bit easier to close some of that off. Most hills that we have in Chatham Forest are pretty popular for sliders apparently. Anyway, I'm just kind of talking, though, so.
Okay, I'll just go back and, quick comments I wanted to make, well done on the engineering thing, I was really impressed with the board that put that together, but I like the people that you've got the cross-section of expertise that you pulled in from the county and other places. The selection of the engineer, I was pleased with it, with the process, it seemed to be very meticulous, and I appreciate that. Don't know that much about Hurry, except I think he may work for us on the Hillsborough Street project, on the grant compliance side.
Wooten did, yeah.
Wooten, I mean, yeah, it's Wooten that we are, right? Yeah, so we have some experience with it, but based on that process I saw, I'm totally convinced that we got a good, good eye there. Tell me about the utility rates, I don't know the rest of the board feels, but we're already in February, and the manager and the finance director will be getting into budget preparation. I don't want to add a lot of pressure to answer the utility rate question in March or April. We can solve that one in time to have a rate increase effective July 1st, I'd like to kind of agree that tonight, and we're not demanding that they do it faster than that. We're already four months away from the fiscal year, but everybody be satisfied that we just rolled that into part of the budget deliberations, and not require them to come up with a solution by April or May or September. And we're so close to the budget cycle, can we just roll that into, anybody agree that?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, everybody's nodding, it just makes sense, we're in the, we're right there, we're right at the present time, so let's do that. And then the other comment was your concerns about vulnerabilities at the water plant and other places around potential capital projects. I had a discussion with Brian the other day about a technique used in my past life too, we had a, we had something in our capital budget that was just called extraordinary maintenance. They gave it to me as the facilities guy. It was a big wad of money, undesigned, that I was at liberty to spend on any building in town if, you know, an air conditioner blew up or a generator blew up or something. So that's a technique that I think we might want to consider creating a CIP budget line called extraordinary maintenance, that the manager can spend it indiscretions, fund it whatever level we're comfortable for him to do projects under, say, $5,000, and it will come up as emergencies. And with respect to the generator at the water plant, if we can, if we can use money that's been set aside from collection, collection of excess capital recovery fees, and fund that in a CIP project, so that it doesn't impact the operating budget of the utility and further inhibit our ability to get rates with, with that, that we, I don't think we want to ignore that issue, but I don't want to think we want to put that expense in the water treatment plant's operating budget, I think it belongs in the CIP and needs to be funded, not from, needs to be funded from that portion of the fund balance that's set aside as collected capital recovery fees and excess fees. Just glad as I was taking this here, so thanks, that's all I have. Any other board members have questions on that? We can move to the finance officer's report.
I'm going to be extremely brief this evening. What you see in front of you is the financial summary report from July 1st through January 31st, and we are now in month seven of our budget year, which is, we made us about 58% of what we would expect to happen, revenue and expenditures. Looking at the general fund, overall revenue is approximately 17% above budget, and revenue is exceeding expenditures by almost $857,000. The reason for that is that we received a lot of ad valorem money in the month of January, which was ad valorem for our property taxes, our motor vehicles, and our tipping fees, so that's why we've got a nice revenue stream flowing currently. Overall expenditures are slightly below budget at the 51.58%, but again, basically on target. The encumbrances and expenditure report details that were provided to show you all the department by land item expenditure and also by fund. Moving on quickly to the water and sewer fund, current revenue is exceeding expenditures by approximately $40,000. Both are below projection, and the 47% and 46% respectively, line again, basically on target with the enterprise fund as well. I will continue to monitor both the general fund and water sewer funds, and the departmental funds for both of those. There was no debt service for water service, the water and sewer for this month, and regarding capital reserve, we had a small revenue increase of approximately $12,000 that was received from Phil Stone Homes, which was a new developer that we had received funds from. Again, we continue to be above projections considerably with the capital reserve fund. And then just as some other miscellaneous information, we were able to send out our 1099s and our W-2s on time for January, and today we actually did the actual transmittals for the employer part of those two, those two transactions, so W-2s and 1099s are all wrapped up and done. And then we also closed on our vehicle loan this month on February 12th, and so that financing is in place, and we're ready to move forward with getting the vehicles in service, purchased first, and then get them into service. And then finally, our 2015-16 budget process is underway, including the capital improvement plan, so we're busy in finance. Any questions?
Any questions? I just kind of, I know, I'm pretty sure lie, one of our expenditures in the general fund is out of shape, and that's legal.
Oh, yes, I can tell you what that is. I'm sorry to interrupt you. What, that's, I'm temporarily charging the Chatham Park expenditures there, and then as they come back through, they're getting credited back to that, so that's why it's over the budget, it's because I've got to charge it someplace while we, until we get reimbursed from Chatham Park.
Is that also happening in engineering? Engineering's kind of.
No, with engineering, with the engineering budget, one of the things we discovered, you talked about the salary line item?
I'm just looking, no, I'm looking at the overall.
Some of engineering, from what I understand, that there was some of the engineering budget that should be charged to water and sewer, and so I need to reallocate that.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But thank you for paying attention.
The only comment I'll make is, you mentioned that your water and sewer revenues seem to be a little low, and that's pretty typical for the wintertime when people turn off their irrigation systems. We'll just watch it, it typically starts going back up again when the grass starts growing in April, May, and June, so that shouldn't be alarming to anybody.
Thank you, that's a good observation.
And then a bunch of your salary lines seemed out of whack, and I think that's probably because you're in this transition where you responded to the audit thing, where they didn't like the way we were allocating our funds, so I don't know whether you've sorted out yet, people who are being paid out of both the general fund and the enterprise fund, is your software smart enough to?
No, yours truly is having, what I'm needing to do is do another analysis of that, and then do reclassification and reallocate the expenses correctly. Our payroll system isn't able to charge more than one cost center, so I've got to do that manually.
How old is that, has that system been, old is this building?
Well, this, I understand that it's about 20-plus years old.
Yeah, a long one.
Yeah, the system, our county system, yeah. The fellow that did tech support said that he has been on tech support for 18 years, and we had the system before he got there, so we've had it for a long time.
I just make the observation that most modern-day accounting software can allocate a salary across several accounts.
Right.
Shopping for a new.
Yes, that's, that's in the works, and.
Yeah, so I understand why the salary lines are a lot of whack. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any EDC updates, it's been a while since we had a meeting.
Who's the next one?
I think the next one is March. Anything from the article?
Yeah. Or we only just have a meeting on Thursday, so.
Okay. So, Chris Bradsmann's not here, DVA Downtown?
They were all happy that we changed the Christmas parade date, very happy.
Good, yeah.
So that they are going to start allowing movers from outside of?
Yeah.
Commissioner, concerns?
Just had one thing, I think Brian made one over just a little while ago, but while we were going over this water and wastewater that we were going to be getting into, I'm just a little concerned as to why we haven't received any information from Preston as how they're going to assist us in this predicament. I mean, are they going to financially assist us on it? I mean, I was assuming we were going to hear something from them tonight, and.
I mean, which, there's a couple of ways, a couple of ways to say that they could assist us, there is an agreement that the board approved that would provide us with $300,000 annually less ad valorem taxes in the future to help with the costs that are going to be associated with development that they have agreed to provide us just recently, without waiting for the litigation. And so that's, I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about here.
No, I, that is for consultant, for now.
That's the one?
Right.
Yeah, that's it.
$300,000, I'm not going to touch, just.
We didn't make it part of the PP, we didn't make it part of.
No, that's for, you know, for consultant, for now.
That's the one.
Right.
Yeah, that's it.
Three hundred thousand, I'm not gonna touch, just watch.
Well, we didn't make it part of the PP, we didn't make it part of the, we approved it without really saying that, sir.
I'm sorry?
No, that's not correct. The master plan does provide that any, develop the need that they create, they're gonna have to pay for. And what you saw on the screen were options that would include participation by the developer, participation by the town, and it's yet to be determined exactly how that mix is gonna happen, but depending on how you want to do it.
So, Preston could be part of our, the private and public.
Yeah, yeah, that, like I said, the three hundred thousand dollars, the point of the EDC, EDC is any kind of mix of, any kind of mix of public-private, depending on how, depending on the project, and how we agreed, how we agreed to arrange it. You saw on there that they could, they would be willing to go as far as to say that they would, they would go, they would have a private, they could actually have a third-party private entity actually financing and structing facilities, and then we would enter into some sort of agreement for how that facility could be operated. That's at one end. The other end is, is that we would, using, using Mayor Terry's example, you know, going to the LGC and saying, let's build, let's build a really big white wastewater treatment plant, and try to finance it out of our own, and we would own it. And that's the other side, that's the other. It'll be somewhere, it'll, it'll be, depending on the infrastructure, depending on the project, it'll be a lot closer to the middle than that. So, it kinda depends on how you consider, what you consider, you know, assistance. There will be an agreement where the, you know, from my standpoint, there has to be an agreement where the town, the town is not holding a disproportionate share of the risk, and that the town is not too weighed down in terms of the operation, that we're put in a position where we don't have the people or the personnel, and the money to pay for the people and the personnel to maintain, operate those facilities. And that's, that's where I'm at with this. So, it's, you know, the magic is gonna be, how do we, how do we agree to come up with something that's, that's equitable for the town, and I would assume, you know, is something that would work out for Preston, though. Can I get closer to that?
Oh, yeah. Kinda ask for follow-up on, Mr. Farrell's concern, that, I know we've been talking about this three hundred thousand dollars for nearly a year now, and it was tied to resolution of a lawsuit. Since that doesn't seem to be moving along as quickly as we hoped, I don't know, but is it possi, do you think it's possible we could renegotiate that? Because the town's incurring expenses, lawsuit or no lawsuit. Is it worth at least floating that by, Preston to say, you know, they've made a, they've made public expressions of their willingness to make sure the town is not financially harmed by their development? Maybe we can remove that linkage to the lawsuit and...
Yeah.
Get them to...
The...
Change that agreement slightly.
They're, they're willing to pay that without, without, it's illegal, without regard necessarily to the lawsuit. They're willing to pay that regardless of the status of the lawsuit.
Effectively disconnecting the linkage.
Effectively disconnecting the lawsuit from that three hundred thousand dollar payment. What, what we need to do is come back to them with a budget, which, which we're working on right now, in terms of what we would add, and what we would need, and how that three hundred thousand dollars would be constituted. What, what we need to do initially, and this is, this is a conversation probably that I'd be looking to have with even more detail in one of the, one of the next few meetings, but what essentially I'd be dealing with is an increase in, in probably one or two positions to plan engineering, and then in this first year, a certain amount of money to deal with the UEO and any other plans that we might be able to get the power bill on sometime in the fall of this year. So, that will probably easily take up the three hundred thousand, oh, that will probably take, easily take up the three hundred thousand dollars, including the facility that we were , we would have to house, plan, and engineering in that, in that first year. Now, the question is, do we wanna increase or alter that agreement to make it more than three hundred thousand dollars? That's a fair question to ask, but if your question is, is that, can we, can we modify it, alter it to kinda divorce it from the litigation, I think they're willing to do that, or...
Yeah, well, that, that would be good. I would like to see, you know, for your sanity and mental, you know, to be able to show that as a revenue line in upcoming budget.
Yeah.
And even if they just wanna make a monthly payment, you know, I don't even, I don't think it needs to be a lump sum paid on July first, but if they can commit to a level of support, and then make quarterly or monthly payments, or twice a year, whatever.
What hasn't been decided is, is whether it would be, initially I heard four, you know, four payments of seventy-five, and, and, you know, I've heard that, you know, we could be looking at something like two payments of one hundred and fifty. I can work with either one.
Yeah.
So, that's not, that's not been an issue. And I think, I think they're interested too, in, or they wanna see us be able to move forward now out of this way too, as a, as a business decision for that. So, I don't think we should feel guilty about it.
Well, maybe, you know, maybe you can take on, get the commitment from them in time to show that as a dependable revenue line, you know, coming budget.
Yeah, we talked about how we wanna, you know, how we wanna close that, it's, I don't think it's gonna be as, I don't think it's gonna be all that scientific for how we, you know, how we work that in the budget, because I think, I think some of this is, some of this is, you know, there're gonna be expenses related to personnel, but at the same time, in terms of, in the terms of the agreement, we still have to be able to, we show them that we're, you know, spending money on things that are related to this project, that fairness to them. And so, yeah, you know, extra staff, for example, will be able to do other things, or maybe we hire extra staff that is able to do the more mundane things, which is, which allows, you know, a bass or a rail to work at a higher altitude, for example. We get away with washing this.
Okay.
But that's what you guys are gonna be looking at here shortly.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Fuller?
I was just, I thought I'd heard at the last meeting that Clarion had completed their code assessment, but I think the report this evening said they had not. So, I'm just not sensing...
I guess I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, and, and there's just no presence in the community of, of that organization, and...
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too. And they've said, I've signed up for emails, and I'm not getting anything, nor have I. So, we can just put a bug in the rear of the folks are not sensing their presence and seeing any work moving forward.
They haven't known us, so.
That's good.
Right. U D A, it was gonna be part of it.
We budgeted.
We budgeted, of course, we can, pay according to the term of agreement, we can use that. And then something, they went back and forth, it's been arguing, but the final agreement, we can use that three hundred thousand dollars to pay U D A, so. Mr. Turner?
I just have a question about this, the, the time conservation meeting Thursday. I'm temporarily unable to go because I'm not taking care of my father's health services. Thursday's my day that I take care of, so.
I can't typically go or stay during business hours.
Okay, I'll keep going. And I had stuff to bring to the group, but I didn't get it, they may do it next time. It's a good group. You're, you're probably...
It's Thursday at six P M., they changed, they changed it this morning.
Oh, well, I can't go, I have a meeting.
Okay. And where is it gonna be? Here?
Oh.
Okay.
In the meeting.
I'll do it.
Okay, awesome. Mornings are, well, just depends on the day. So, that's all.
Okay, there being, none for their business, the way you're pushing to adjourn.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Your adjourn.